Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to welcome you to the July 10th regular legislative session here at the County Courthouse. We're going to start first with a public hearing. Mr. Mitchell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please take notice that the County of Oswego will hold a public hearing on July 10, 2025, at 2:00 p.m. in the Oswego County Legislative Chambers, 46 East Bridge Street, Oswego. On the purpose of holding a public hearing regarding a community development block grant application for the Valley Sewer Extension Project, by order of the County Legislature, June 26, 2025, that's the Sherman Saunders clerk. A person wishing to be heard regarding the community development block grant application regarding the Valley Sewer Extension Project, please step forward and state your name.
Mr. Speaker, my dear. There being no persons wishing to be heard, our question declared the public hearing closed at 2:05. Thank you. Moving now to the regular 2 o'clock session, would you please call the roll?
Michael Yurden.
Present.
Herbert Yurden.
Present.
Edward Gilson.
Here.
David Foles.
Here.
Roy Rehill.
Here.
Johnny Martino.
Here.
Frank Moparo.
Here.
Paul House.
Here.
James Weatherup.
Here.
Mary Ellen Chesbrough.
Present.
Linda Lockwood.
Present.
Richard Klein.
Present.
Patrick Twist has been marked excused. Stephen Walpole.
Here.
Kevin Hill.
Here.
James Scanlon.
Here.
Charles Berger.
Here.
Robert Wilmot has been marked excused. Marie Shaw.
Here.
Paul Conley.
Present.
Noel Samson.
Here.
James Karasik.
Here.
Michael Soloway.
Here.
Mark Freckel.
Here.
Frank Castiglia.
Wouldn't miss it.
Mr. Chairman, that's 23 present to excuse we have.
Thank you. Thank you. Would you please lead us in the invocation?
Please help us look back at the past with gratitude and to the future with hope. Make us unafraid of our dreams and release us from skepticism. Teach us to accept challenges we face and help us to build a stronger tomorrow. May we always be sincere in our efforts to help others in need and have the wisdom to teach our children to love, to respect, and to be kind so they may grow with peace and mind. Amen.
Thank you. Today's pledge will be led by legislators Gilson and Klein.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome back legislators Craft and legislator Shaw who have been out of minor depending on your point of view, medical. Welcome back and others. Mr. Yurden was out earlier for a month or two, but anyways, more than welcome to come back. Thank you. So having said that, trust we've had a chance to look at the minutes from the regular meeting of June 12th and the special meeting of June 26th.
So moved.
So moved. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Minutes are approved. Under proclamations, could I have the Public Safety Committee and David Hall please come forward?
Chuck, can you move it?
I sure don't.
Thank you. And three, two, one. One more. Thank you.
So National Pre-Trial Probation Supervision Week. Personally, we just say we're blessed to have this man as our record. Whereas Oswego County probation professionals play a critical role in our public safety and justice system, and whereas these highly trained professionals uphold the law with respect and dignity for all while promoting successful opportunities for individuals on supervision and protect our communities from criminal activity, and whereas in 2024, the Oswego County probation department completed more than 1,000 court ordered investigations and supervised more than 750. And whereas Oswego County Legislature acknowledges probation employees for their hard work and dedication for such an important and mandatory area of public service, we extend gratitudes for their vital role in helping to keep our communities safe. And whereas this legislative body also recognizes that individuals on pretrial release and probation supervision benefit from treatment, education, and other services that prevent recidivism and enable them to join their families and communities to lead a crime-free, successful life. And now therefore, Mr. Speaker, the rest of the General and the Oswego County Legislature on behalf of the entire legislature and the people of Oswego County do hereby proclaim July 23 to 26, 2025, this National Pre-Trial Probation Supervision Week.
I just want to say we appreciate the recognition and I want to thank my staff and all their hard work and dedication. It can be very difficult to challenge a job, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you. I would also note that our county administrator is on his way to the National Association of Counties, prestigious in our world. He is the president-elect for the New York State Association of Counties for next year, so it's a pretty big honor. Having said that, introduction to visitors. Welcome all. Next, public speakers on resolutions of the day. Mr. Speaker, my dear. Did you say none? Some, Paul, some. Okay, thank you. I would remind everyone that these conversations are limited. To be fair to everyone, there are five minutes to discuss an actual resolution that we are discussing today. It's not about national policy. It's not about is the moon made out of cheese. These are about resolutions that will be discussed. Having said that, I would ask Paul McKinnney to come forward.
I see you, Paul.
I say that in jest.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. You have five minutes, sir.
I need my script today, okay? I'm Paul McKinnney and I'm here today to support Agenda HS number one, the resolution that is appointing Tricia Clark to the Child Protection Advisory Council. And for those of you who are here who are not familiar with the council, it was created by the Oswego County Legislature and it states very clearly to promote the best interests of children in Oswego County. And having said that, I was asked by a colleague in front to add this statement. The members of indivisible Oswego County are urging the legislature again to adopt the no collusion resolution policy. This policy would have a direct relationship to the safety and welfare of children that are coming.
Excuse me, sir.
Excuse me, but you don't have the right to interrupt me. I'm speaking. This is my time to speak and your turn to listen. Moving on. The policy would help alleviate any further harm to the innocent children in Oswego County. The first request was made in May, the meeting, the second in June, and shortly afterwards, I think most of you here are aware that the county sheriff was involved in a probe.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, this is all.
Was involved with a probe by the Attorney General for his enforcement practices. There's an overwhelming evidence that Border Patrol and ICE are criminally targeting immigrants.
Mr. McKinnney, with all due respect, this is not the resolution of the day.
Most of whom have no criminal record and are denying them their constitutionality required by law. We're asking the county legislature once again to please at least pass this policy. We understand that there's been quite a discussion at the Safety Committee as to what is a no collusion policy. So we would recommend that they look closely at the most recent updated policy that was adopted by the Oswego Police Department. This was submitted by Patty Babalow, who's a member of the IOC Committee. On a personal note, if I could just finish by saying, this is just decent behavior. These are kids, innocent kids. The sheriff has denied this activity. There is evidence. There's photographs, there's videotapes, and there's documented people who have seen this happen. Where's your decency? Where's your decency? It's common sense to do this because, underworn, it will help protect kids and dads and moms that are coming, but also it will alleviate any possibility of a major lawsuit against the sheriff's department and you. So please, please consider it. It's so important. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to have the minutes reflect, be removed, on everything that Mr. McKinnney said, honor that what is with respect to the resolution that he's signing up for. Moving on, let's come to light, let's be civil. Listen. Thank you. I would like Veronica Shaver to come forward. And again, it would be per our rules for the last 30-some years, if you can speak to the resolution you're referring to, HS one.
Yes, I'd like to address HS one resolution appointing member to the Child Protection Agency Council. Child Protective Services investigates reports of suspected abuse and maltreatment of children in Oswego County. Case workers assess multiple risk factors and the safety of children involved to determine if the family needs assistance in order to keep their child safe. Immigrant children experience intense trauma because of threats of ICE. Mental health care providers who have worked with immigrant patients are familiar with the psychological harm caused by law enforcement, crackdowns in anti-immigrant rhetoric. Counselors are seeking ways of curing trauma-induced anxiety among immigrants and their families. Some young patients experience intense separation anxiety when they go to school, afraid that they'll never return home or that their parents will be gone. This is a form of abuse by ICE. Many adults ask friends and families to buy groceries for them or to walk their kids to school for fear that ICE will arrest people at their places of work. Younger patients are asking why people hate immigrants so much, out of fear of ICE. Right now, people are trapped in their homes. Children are now having conversations with parents about what Plan B and Plan C are if they get deported. They're going to notary publics to write down what will happen to their children. People are being grabbed off the streets and their family members don't know where they're being taken. There's a level of terror that has never been seen before. And many have passed traumas from home countries, their journeys to the United States in their settlement. Those who have memories of their lives in Latin America have reported experiences of extreme poverty, abuse from family members, or discrimination because they're indigenous. Many who recall their journeys north remember being exposed to extreme violence, murder, physical, and sexual assault, kidnapping, and extortion. They're forced to work in exchange for food and shelter, or they're told that they have to work for a certain period of time in order to gain passage to the next stop on their route. This is true of unaccompanied minors, but it's also true of families who've made their journeys together. Then, when they arrive in this country, the threat of deportation hangs over them. Many kids experience difficulty in school and many adults are underemployed. Food may be scarce and they hear the Trump administration officials saying that all of them are criminals and that many of them are violent. Imagine the trauma this causes to families and to children. It's encouraging to know that there's a resolution here today to appoint a member to the Child Advisory Council. Hopefully, all members of the Child Advisory Council will consider the trauma experienced by children and provide assistance to keep all children safe, including immigrant children. Thank you.
Resolutions in motion, Government Courts, Consumer Affairs, Resolution GC1 by legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Department of Public Defender filing reimbursement.
Yes, this is a $4,000 dollar issue, despite the overall pandemic coming into effect under 2025 funding. I also see those $10,000 paid.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Speaker, proceed.
Mr. Chairman, I was in governments and courts, and in the committee, I raised the issue that there were no informational memorandums attached to any of the GC resolution. And I was told it would be included in the booklet that we would get, the agenda we get today, which it is. But as far as I've been in this legislative body for 10 years, every resolution, when it was brought to the committee, had informational memorandums attached to them so that we knew what we were talking about and what we were voting on. I did not have a vote in that committee, but I think it's very lame to do something like this. And I said that none of those resolutions should have been brought forward to that committee at that time. We cannot keep going on the way we're going. Things are going down and it's not right. And one of the big things that's happening is in governments and courts, the video again is not working. Now, we pay the IT department $800,000 a year in salaries. A month ago, we didn't have videos because it was full. Then we redid the system and the first thing anybody does that's ever worked anywhere, if you change the system, the first thing you do is you troubleshoot it to make sure everything's working right. Well, it wasn't troubleshooting because the deputy clerk was sitting there trying to get it to videotape and it wouldn't. So all we have is audio. We do not have a video. That's unacceptable and I don't think anybody should accept that happening here, that kind of money that we're paying for. Thank you very much for your time, sir.
Any other discussion? Mr. Speaker, Gilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was present at the Government Courts Committee meeting and I will agree that the summation was not available, but the public defender was there and he explained this to the whole committee and any people that were there. So it was understood at committee, despite the fact that there did have a written back of time.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Chairman, that's 23 favors, zero opposed and two excuses.
Thank you. Moving to Resolution GC2 by legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Walsall Capital LLC Valuation Services Oswego Steam Station and Tax Detention.
This involves no tax authentication concerning Oswego Steam Station?
Yes, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Chairman, that's 23 favors, zero opposed and two excuses.
Thank you. Resolution GC3 by legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution, urgent adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing the submission of a New York State Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant application and the New York State Community Development Block Grant for the Town Valley, New York State Group Three Sewer Extension Project.
Yes, this is a proposed project that extends from New York State Group Three to the well-known Valley Elementary School to Briscoe Hill Landville. It's approximately 2.6 miles. Project cost is $70,000.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Speaker, proceed.
In the committee, there was a question asked, how much is the grant for? We know the cost, but what is the grant going to be for? And at that time, the administrator said that he would give us that information. I still don't see it in the informational memorandum here, so we don't know what the grant's going to be for and how much of it is going to be federally funded, how much is state-funded, how much we're going to have to come up with, nothing. And I know it's just an application for a grant. I understand it before someone, we're only applying for a grant. How much you go to a bank and say, I want to borrow money, first word out of the house is how much money you want to borrow? Well, how much is the grant going to be for and how much are we going to be responsible for out of that? How much is just each, you know, our share?
It's my understanding that the grant award total dollars is not determined until the in-fact split pile down and over, so we wouldn't necessarily know that for that. But I will make sure that the administration gets you that number just as quick as we can. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Chairman, that's 23 favors, zero opposed and two excuses.
Thank you. Moving to the Public Safety Committee, legislator Greco with Resolution PS1.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and recommend its approval.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Sheriff's Office transfer from insurance recovery, Treasury's office, to automotive supplies and repair group division.
This is covering four different accidents. I think the total is over 17,000. They'd like to put that into it, please.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Chairman, that's 23 favors, zero opposed and two excuses.
Thank you. Resolution PS2 by legislator Greco.
Chairman, I offer this resolution and recommend its approval.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing the acceptance of a donation from Stewart Shops for the Emergence and Management Office.
I see the amount is $400. They'd like to put that into their program.
Thank you. legislator Shaw.
It should be about $400,000 according to the amount of police calls down the east side. I'd just like to say that.
Oh, did you call the O P D?
Anyway. Give them a lot more money.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Chairman, that's 23 favors, zero opposed and two excuses.
Thank you. Moving to Resolution PS3 by legislator Greco.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and recommend its approval.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing an increase to the salary of the summer interns. All right, the amount for the summer interns was accidentally listed on the budget for a little less and they need to raise it to $12,400, this budget, which will.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Speaker, proceed.
Mr. Chairman, in the Public Safety Committee, I asked how that mistake was made and I want to thank the district attorney for saying that he made the mistake, for owning up to making the mistake. I'd be totally in favor of this. Somebody steps up and said that they made the mistake, then I would totally be behind giving them the money if they do what needs to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Chairman, that's 23 favors, zero opposed and two excuses.
Thank you. Resolution PS4 by legislator Greco.
I offer this resolution and recommend its approval.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with the Northeast UAS Aerospace Integration Research Alliance, EDA U-Air.
So this will allow the drones to be flown outside of visual line of sight. Having this radar available to them, they'll be able to fly to two miles outside of the range allowed by the FAA, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Chairman, that's 23 favors, zero opposed and two excuses.
Thank you. Resolution PS5 by legislator Greco.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and recommend its approval.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Northeast UAS Aerospace Integration Research Alliance, EDA U-Air, E911.
All right, this is a resolution moving the funds, authorizing the treasury, moving the fund.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Chairman, that's 23 favors, zero opposed and two excuses.
Thank you. Moving to the Human Services Committee, Resolution HS1 by legislator Scannell.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and I urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution appointing member to the Child Protection Advisory Council.
Yes, this member will be Tricia Clark. Tricia Clark brings over two decades of progressive leadership within the community health, including her current role as President/CEO of Connect Care, where she oversees the integrity, primary behavior, and dental health services across Oswego County. Her appointment will strengthen the cross-sector between solving, I'm sorry, her expertise in coordinating care systems and establishing collaboration with state and local agencies will make her uniquely positioned to bring critical gaps between child protection and the health of her healthcare community.
Thank you. It's my understanding she's very well qualified. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Chairman, that's 23 favors, zero opposed and two excuses.
Thank you. Resolution HS2 by legislator Scannell.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and I urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing the reclassification of one vacant social services specialist to a senior social services specialist position in the Department of Social Services.
Mr. Chairman, this is a reclassification that is needed because of the reorganization that's been going on out there at PSS and will help with the shared services that they will perform each other.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Speaker, proceed.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at the salary and the reimbursement here. Of this percent of federal or state reimbursement of 50%, how much of that is federal money? Does anybody have an idea?
I don't have that firmly, but I can look it up probably. Or we can get it back. The commissioner is here. Excuse me, the commissioner is here?
No.
There might be any other.
She wants.
Are you asking the salary on that for the?
It says percentage of federal or state reimbursement is 50%.
Here comes a director's salary. Should be an answer.
How much is going to be federal money? How much is federal money?
Are you hearing the state and federal?
That's the state and federal. Mr. Chairman, how much is federal?
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't have it figured out by student priorities combined. So combined, I think it's state priorities that's the total list for me.
The reason I'm asking this question you for.
Excuse me, just for a second, legislator Greco, as a previous engagement, in our best interest, we're all doing that. So thank you. All right, back to you.
The reason I'm asking you the question, Mr. Chairman, is that everybody saw that the big beautiful bill just got passed. Federal aid is going to be cut. So, and you, and I all know that the state's not going to pick up that cost. It's going to be passed down to us. And everybody thinks the big beautiful bill is great.
And everybody thinks the big beautiful bill is great, but I'm sorry, taxpayers are going to pick up that cost. So I'm going to ask that in each one of these, which one, how much is federal money, how much is state money? Because the state is, is passed through from the federal government.
Thank you very much. Any other, legislator, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With all due respect, we do not know what the state is or is not going to cover. Uh, our county administrator has been working on trying to find out what the, uh, what is and is not going to take place. So, uh, at this time, to speculate what is going to be done and what is not, it, it, it's, we just can't do that at this particular moment. We, we need to find out what the state is going to do by their actions and by what we find out from our county administrator first.
And I would add that our administrator is in, uh, at the National Association of Counties right now advocating for us in all regards, but especially in this one.
Legislator, Scott?
It's absolutely critical that we speculate in these times because we could be left with a bill that's not able to be paid. We have been warned that the costs are going to be ferocious. So to not be nimble, to not anticipate costs, in my estimation, is a grave error. Thank you.
Any other, proceed.
Just a pity bag got put just sort of shot at statement. Yes, it is our job to speculate. Uh, but I'm not against this promotion. What I'm looking for is for us to start taking a look at what it's going to cost us. And we have to start doing that. And the only way we can do that is by letting our federal representatives know what we are or not in favor of. And cuts to the federal spending that's going to help him in services is detrimental to this county. We're the one of the poorest counties in the state. We need as much federal aid as we can get and it's going to be cut. And that's why I brought it up. And I will be in favor of this. Got a selection of things, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If you didn't, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, that's twenty-two favors, zero opposed and three excuses.
Thank you. Resolution HS3 by legislator Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and I urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing the reclassification of two vacant social services specialist positions to two social services special assistant positions in the Department of Social Services.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a restructuring still continuing, uh, within the integrated services. Provides an opportunity for, to assess current jobs duties, determine ongoing needs, current structure with the team. Uh, this will help them be able to work with the team a lot more effectively.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator, proceed.
Uh, just look right at me, right there. I, uh, the commissioner did give me, you know, breakdown, but it's still, it's not telling us how much of the state money and federal money we, how much is this state, how much is federal? All right, now, but my main concern with this, and I will not be in favor of this resolution, is that there are vacant positions right now, which means we can't hire anybody at a grade ten. So what we're going to do is we're going to boot their responsibilities, their job duties down to a seven from what I can read, and pay them seven for doing what used to be done by a ten. Are the sevens in position now or they have to be filled? Does anybody know that these positions that, you know, the people are there now?
For the understanding, they're in the position now.
They're in the positions now.
They're in the ones.
So, you know, I mean, we had people walking out the door before because they weren't being paid properly. And if you're going to hand me somebody else's work and say, you know what? You're going to do it for a lot less than what we were paying these people to because we can't fill the positions.
They're not doing the same.
I'd be walking out the door.
They're not doing the same duties.
That says that you are reclassifying and moving the duties down to a grade seven. But the informational stuffs. Okay, it says that they were, they were duties that could be performed by a, uh, what do they call it, a assistant? And it was a grade seven. So it wasn't being done by a ten, now it's going to be done by a seven. The ten was getting more money, the seven isn't. I will not be voting in favor of this. Thank you very much for your time.
Legislator, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we, uh, hired a, a new director of the S S to do things like this, to figure out what she needed and how she needed to do it. I believe this is part of her ongoing plan on making the Department of Social Services more fit for what its duties are. I have to rely on her and her knowledge of this department and what she's doing.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, that's twenty-one in favor, one opposed and three excuses.
Thank you. Resolution PS4 by legislator Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and I urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Department of Social Services, Adult and Family Services, Residential Domestic Violence Expenses, Emergency Services.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this resolution for the domestic violence service are provided in accordance with the law and regulations of New York State, including but not limited to, uh, there's a lot of accuracy here, eighteen, N Y C R R Part four oh eight, four five two, four five three, four five four, four five five, as well as those standards described in New York State Child Care, or Office of the Child, Children and Family Services. These services include providing emergency shelter service and care by victims of domestic violence and are provided by the agencies with whom residential programs for domestic violence is certified by New York State. The expenses, uh, over the years have fluctuated consistently every year. Uh, in two thousand twenty-four, it was one hundred ninety-nine thousand. We're currently tracking, we're at a hundred thirty-two thousand. And to finish the year, they're asking that we transfer funds from, uh, other supplies and expenses, uh, and de, or I'm sorry, increase other supplies and expenses for, for this program and also decrease, uh, other supplies and expenses for, uh, P E C O, which is a budget line of three hundred forty thousand.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator, proceed.
This is another program that is very, very highly needed and I'll be voting in favor of it. Although I still, I don't see any federal aid on this. This is forty-nine percent state, fifty-one percent, uh, local share. But, uh, forty-nine percent state, is that coming from federal government through the state or is that just state money?
If they pass it through, it'll be coming to us.
So it's coming from the federal government.
Correct.
Forty-nine percent. So that forty-nine percent could be a lot less.
No, that's, that's not...
It could be, you don't know. I don't know. All I'm saying is that you have to look at what we're giving. We have to let the people know they're above us, they're at the state, federal level, how important it is to maintain the percentage that they give us. Because these people are, they're residents also. We need to make sure we take care of them. Thank you very much. I'll be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, that's twenty-two favors, zero opposed and three excuses.
Thank you. Resolution PS5 by legislator Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and I urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Department of Social Services, Adult and Family Services, Residential Domestic Violence Expenses, Legal Fees.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a, uh, we've been doing some, we've been short attorneys out there at the Department of Social Services, so we've had to outsource some work and, and what we need to do is make sure we have the funding to be able to source that. And that's what this is for.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator, proceed. Did you want to remain standing a whole time?
I, I, I did, but somebody might already called me on the point and word around that, sir, so I guess, you know, I don't want to, uh... But there's no reinforcement on this, correct?
Not that I know of, no.
And these are very, very, this is very, very important. I don't care what the cost is, okay, it's going to come to us and we need to, we need to spend it. These, uh, people need representation and that's what we're supposed to do. I hope that the federal or state government would give us money, but they, they won't. But thank you very much. I'll be voting in favor of this. Yeah, you can take my salary next year and give it to them.
By legislator Holt?
Uh, I believe this resolution was amended in committee to remove, um, the adult family services residential domestic violence because it was for general legal fees and not, uh, that specific program. It was for all legal fees for the department that has lagged in terms. So there was a resolution that was passed in committee.
Everybody seen it?
Yeah, it was.
So it was amended?
Yeah, it was amended in committee. So if we need to do that again. It was basically, we, we struck adult family services.
Sometimes maybe we don't need to, you know, have to, you know.
The clerk can conform that. Right. The clerk will conform that.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Legislator Gilson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would just, uh, note for the record that this is budget neutral, it is an internal transfer.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Legislator, read.
I do believe that, uh, there is reimbursement for legal fees in the Department of Social Services. Not exactly sure what the rate is.
Right.
Typically, that, that is true.
Did you catch that?
I couldn't, yeah, I couldn't hear what, uh, Mr. Reel was saying.
Well, well, Mr. Reel can address it.
You're outside, please. My, my understanding is that there is reimbursement. I think it's, uh, sixty-two percent. I'm not exactly sure. Thank you very much, sir.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, that's twenty-two favors, zero opposed and three excuses.
Thank you. Moving then to Economic Development Planning Committee, Resolution EP1 by legislator Chesbro.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and I urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Department of Workforce Development, accept additional revenue from New York System Change and Inclusion Opportunities Network.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, what this is, is we are accepting additional revenue from the New York Systems of sixty thousand dollars, which will help to improve participation of disabled individuals in the Swigosene County to be able to get trained and get to work.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, that's twenty-two favors, zero opposed and three excuses.
Thank you. Moving to Resolution EP2 by legislator Chesbro.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Department of Workforce Development, Acceptance of State Level Incentive Grant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this grant is more or less, um, earned by the Workforce Development Department because they did so well on all of the things that they needed to check the boxes of. And we were given a hundred thousand dollars to continue the good work that we're, that that department has been doing. It is for dislocated workers and training for youth.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, that's twenty-two favors, zero opposed and three excuses.
Thank you. Resolution EP3 by legislator Chesbro.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution awarding professional services contract, R F P twenty-five dash C B T E zero zero one, County Route Eighty-Nine Stabilization Design.
Um, yes, this has been discussed in the legislation before. We have a problem with Route Eighty-Nine due to the flooding in twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen and that the road is simply going to be going into the lake if we don't do something and it is a county road. So what this is, is an R F P that we are taking the lowest bid, which is for Bartman Le Judis for a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator, Scott?
Hi, the wording was vague. Is this a one-time payment? Is this a partial payment or a recurring payment?
This is for the design. This is just the design.
Hundred and eighty thousand total.
Yes, for the design. That was for the R F P went out for designing of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, that's twenty-two favors, zero opposed and three excuses.
Thank you. Resolution EP4 by legislator Chesbro.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and I urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution establishing a biannual registration fee for the short-term rental registry.
Um, as at last, um, legislative meeting, we did accept the law for a, um, short-term fee, rental registry, and now we are setting the fee and it is only five, fifty dollars for two years. Basically, it comes up to fifty cents a week to have, um, the fee for the registry.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator, Scott?
Could you define short-term rental?
Anything less than thirty days.
Yeah, anything less than thirty days.
Airbnb's.
Airbnb's, yes.
Even though sometimes they go longer than thirty days, but...
In which case, they may all under the occupancy tax law provision separate from this.
So I had suggested these fees a long time ago in twenty, does this help us eliminate an additional employee to keep track of all this? Or if they have their...
If you have to talk to the department on staffing, uh, this will generate revenues for these, came to the registry, uh, the registry of these rental units within the county, which will be shared with multiple jurisdictions. The occupancy tax side is separate from, from this fee. That's four percent, uh, of the occupancy fee.
Rich, does a copy filed with the fire department for each one of these addresses that are filed and...
That is not part of the local law, uh, local code, uh, and building enforcement still has jurisdiction over these, um, locations. They have the compliance with zoning land use. This is just, they have a registry at county level, uh, in accordance with state law. And, and the purpose of this resolution is to set the fee for that registry at twenty-five dollars a year. Ten of which goes, ten of the total fee by any, uh, by any of these goes to the county clerk process of the application.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Legislator, proceed.
Uh, since fifty dollars a unit, is that, uh, like if he's got three places that he's renting for less than thirty days, is it, so each one of them he has to pay fifty dollars for or is it just his one application?
It'll, it'll be, as defined in the law, uh, the unit, uh, if there are, you know, two bedrooms in one unit, it's not per bedroom.
Well, it's not one, per bedroom, I'm talking about if he's got, you know...
Well, if there's separate cabins, it's like...
He's got separate cabins.
Each may have to register.
Each one of them he has to, if he's got five cabins there, he's got to buy and pay a fee of fifty dollars for each one of them.
I'll take a look at that.
All right, so you don't know right now?
Uh, the, per unit, uh, the fee is per unit. But, uh, if there's, the occupancy tax would be one certificate, uh, uh, certificate of authorization, it's like occupancy tax. The short-term rentals have to be inspected per unit because there are specific requirements per unit as to fire extinguishers, ingress, egress, uh, floor plans, and parking and that information.
Yes, so if he had five units, then he would have to pay two dollars and fifty cents a week for it, yes?
Oh, so he, it's, it's, so it's fifty dollars for all five of his units?
For two years.
For two years. Okay, now, is this, I know we set up this registry, is this going to cover the cost of, of running this registry? Keep track of this registry or is this just a B A, you know?
You know, this is under the planning department. It's not operational yet. Planning department thought this fee would be adequate to cover the cost of the registry. The local law requires the legislature review the fee periodically to see whether it's sufficient or not, or it's still changing.
So basically, we don't think it's going to cover the cost of having a mandatory registry.
I would say that, I, I vote, we don't know what the cost is yet because there's not nothing wrong.
We're going to set the fee, okay?
Thank you. Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, that's twenty-two favors, zero opposed and three excuses.
Thank you. Resolution EP5 by legislator Chesbro.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution designating environmentally few record certifying officer for the Boundless Sewer Incentive Project.
Um, this is the same project that we had the, um, public hearing for as well as applying for the grant in GC2. This, however, in all C B D, um, G grants, you have to have an officer that oversees everything. So what we're doing is we are putting, um, the director of planning as a Jim Stahl.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I stand in favor, zero opposed and three excuse.
Thank you. Resolution EP-6 by legislator Chesbrough.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification Department of Workforce Development. Accept additional revenue for summer youth programs program.
Yes, this is accepting a ten thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars that is coming from the New York State Office of New York, of Temporary and Disability Assistance to help with our summer youth programs.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator Christie.
How much of this money is coming from the federal government?
None.
Does anybody know? Yeah, somebody's gonna say, why are you asking the question?
I'm not asking the question. It's coming from the state office.
The state office that comes through the federal government? All right, now--
Well, but if we were going to stop, Frank, I have to say--
Now, I'm looking to stop.
No, 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 I know, but the explanation of your saying, you're questioning all of this, if we stop everything that might happen, there are so many programs that we would have to take off the docket right now. We have to go ahead and try as best as we can to keep our services for our residents and find out, work for it, lobby for it, go to, see if we can't get the money for it. But we can't stop doing business because we're afraid if we're not gonna get the money. That's my concern. And I do not know how much of this ten thousand is coming from the federal government, but I want this money to be able to help my summer youth program.
Mr. Chairman, any other discussion?
No, I, I wasn't done, you know. Took my couple minutes.
So sorry. I have to get my thirty seconds.
So I take it everybody took out of me asking how much money's coming from state and federal government, that I don't wanna spend this money? That is what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, the state and federal costs are gonna hurt the people that we wanna help the most. And that's who we have, that's why we have to contact state, federal representatives to say, you're hurting us, and you're not hurting just nobody, you're hurting the people. And this program is essential because these kids need to be working. We need to pay for these jobs. And we have, we will supply, whether the state or federal government doesn't come up with the money. But what I'm saying is, we gotta push them to do what they're supposed to do, what they're elected to do, just like we are elected to do.
And that is exactly what we are doing, and exactly what our chairman is doing, and exactly what our administrator is doing at the New York, at the National NICO. That's what they're doing, is we're trying to make sure that we do have the money for our residents that are in need. We aren't sitting here doing nothing. We are going after--
Auto-representing. Going for the bill. Yo! Being honest.
Listen, civilty. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I stand in favor, zero opposed and three excuse.
Thank you. Moving to the Health Committee, Resolution HE-1 by legislator House.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution appointing member to the Oswego County Traffic Safety Board.
Yeah, we had to amend this in committee back in 145, but Mr. Castilla wasn't here, so we had a quorum, so we approved it. The term is gonna be from 7/11/2025 to 7/11/2028.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I think we have to do the amendment on--
Well, yes.
I'll, I'll move to make that--
We've moved to make the amendment. Any discussion on the amendments? Second, any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Back to the original resolution then, as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I stand in favor, zero opposed and three excuse.
Thank you. Moving to Infrastructure Facilities and Technology, Resolution IT-1 by legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution and recommend its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution establishing capital project number C-0425, airport perimeter fence design.
Yes, well, it is as written as we know, the, it's become overgrown over the years and whatnot, and this is gonna enable us to design a new fence that we will gradually work.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator Christie.
I'm misunderstanding the, because I thought it was to do, to hire somebody--
It's establishing a capital project.
Establish the capital project, I see that, but we have to have somebody tell us what kinda animals are maybe causing us, what wildlife is causing us problems.
Sir, that's a requirement from the FAA. We're not redesigning--
Right, I, I understand that it's a requirement, but that is, that isn't my question. My question is, I know the fence needs to be replaced, it's a federal regulation, so it's gonna cost us--
That's the issue.
Well, the issue is--
We can hear your problem all day.
Why does that?
Well, that's, that's, the issue, sir, okay, is the fact that the airports losing a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars of taxpayer money every year, and this is gonna cost us three hundred and seventy-five dollars to find out what kinda animals that could cause problems out in the, you know, on the runway. And I understand that we don't have, we don't have a choice in it, and if you don't do the study, you won't be able to get the grant money. And if you do the study, it doesn't guarantee that you'll get the grant money, but if you get the grant money, we'll get, it'll cost us three hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's my point, is that the airport, again, is causing the taxpayer--
That's what we should do, Frank. That is not resolved, this problem.
Turn it into a private enterprise, that's what you should do with it, or start charging, because there are the other departments that I can see is making money, okay? This, this service is not making money. Charge, rent.
Federal government, we're not supposed to make money, remember? Everything, we have a head, this is your issue, we're not supposed to make money, we're supposed to--
Why don't you ask me to answer you? I'm answering you.
Is there any other discussion?
Well, it did make sense, I'm funny for you.
Excuse me, is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I stand in favor, two opposed and three excuse.
Thank you. Moving to Resolution IT-2 by legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution and recommend its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing expenditure from unappropriated fund balance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars. This is to, this is to flower setups. The reason for it now is because they're available, and I'm sure of waiting time, not only that's here, but we're notified that the cost is going to go up significantly. Basically, these were there.
Thank you. Thank you. Legislator Shaw.
Is there chips reimbursement available?
Yes.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the--
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I stand in favor, zero opposed and three excuse.
Thank you. Resolution IT-3 by legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution and recommend its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution establishing capital project number 0925, and funding from the department's current bill for fund balance and highway and street account, earth repairs, and equipment replacement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this, well, it is as written as we know, the age of the earth and establishing this project is going to further us keep it going until we come up with a permanent solution down there. What I mean by that is, we're made of retirement going out, and we are currently looking at smaller.
Yes, thank you. It's, that, that unit has served us well over the years.
Absolutely.
But it is aging. Any other discussion? Legislator Craig.
The biggest important point out of that way comes out of the government they have--
The Enterprise Fund?
Yeah.
Yes, it is, for those who don't, or aren't aware, that is an Enterprise Fund, which basically covers their own expenses and revenues. Good catch, legislator. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I stand in favor, zero opposed and three excuse.
Thank you. Resolution IT-4 by legislator Walpole, and I do understand it needs to be amended.
I offer the following resolution and recommend its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing expenditure from capital reserve number 21, building renovations to capital project number C-0525-DSS, elevator emergency repair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I knew this doesn't look to be amended, I just don't have the information.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, legislator Christie.
I make a motion to amend this to its fund age in, in the object of 450310, and the project is C-0525.
Yes, do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have a second? Any discussion on the amendments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Going back then to the original resolution as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I stand in favor, one opposed, pardon, twenty-two in favor, zero opposed and three excuse.
All right, thank you, sir. Moving then to Martino, or legislator Martino finding personnel, they have no resolutions, so legislator Martino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to waive the rules for GC-4 only.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution GC-4 by legislator Walpole.
Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution, urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification county attorney.
Yes, this is for the county attorney's office for incurring unexpected expenses related to Oswego steam station dilatation. I will order for the regional storage system, specialized legal and solving services at any place, FBI could represent us.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator Shaw.
Mr. Chairman, I hope they take into consideration the value of the intakes when they're doing this assessment.
The intake?
The intakes at the steam station.
Oh, yeah.
They're worth hundreds, hundreds, and hundreds of millions of dollars.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I stand in favor, zero opposed and three excuse.
The resolution's about--
You know what's that?
The law of resolutions on the screen.
All the time.
What's the law?
What's that?
The law of the screen is wrong?
Yeah.
The law of-- Oh, yeah, well, that resolution didn't make the screen, but--
All right, sir. Moving on, any unfinished business? Thank you, and I know there's a number, a couple legislators that had an appointment, you had a consideration to leave at three o'clock, I know, I think legislator, you're gonna stay, not stay, it's the same. I'll just run in here and do that. Any miscellaneous business? Legislator Christie. You're speechless, Frank, I've never heard--
Ah, I'm not speechless, I'm just trying to get under it here.
Okay.
Twenty fourteen, a lot of us joined this legislative body. Legislature, I'm right, we joined the same time I did, few of you joined the same time I did. Legislature shot, we joined the same time. And when we ran for this office, we thought, wow, that is something to get elected to. This legislature represents the whole county. We're not a town board, we're not a common council, we're not on a school board. We represent the whole county. We represent Democrats, we represent Republicans. Everybody said, I'm doing this to get the cheers, this is my new crowd, I don't need a new crowd, I'm not running for anything. Okay? All I'm saying is, we had honor, we had class, I mean, I walked around with my chest puffed up, hey, I'm a county legislator now. And I'm sure, I mean, one of you, the first time you got elected, thought the same thing. Because there wasn't ten or fifteen people that voted for you, there was a lot of people that voted for you, okay? You had class, you were a step above everybody else. In twenty fourteen, that was all true. Things that happened within this legislative body, and we need to go back to where we was, where we were in twenty fourteen. We need to have that class again. What happened at the last meeting was very, very disheartening, very, very sad. And I know it was a nighttime meeting. And I personally went to the majority leader and said to him, I want you to vote, block on all of these resolutions. And there was only two committees that I didn't have a block on. The reason I did that is so that the people that wanted to speak would have some time, and the legislature would have a short period of time to listen to the resolutions. I did that for that reason. And what happened? We pulled a meeting at the end. We had two meetings today, the beginning. The only other time there was a meeting at the end was when we were up in Glass Guy, and that was done after the public comment period. We need to go back to twenty fourteen. It's gotta start today, and it's gotta continue. In six months, I won't be here, you won't have to listen to me stand up and speak, or raise my hand in, you know, in disagreement with something. But I'll tell you something, I was proud to be a legislator until the last meeting. Don't let it happen again, please. Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Legislator Reed.
Mr. Chairman, it's not actually miscellaneous, we skipped over the reports of special committees earlier, so I'm not trying to call you out on that, but it was an accident, I'm sure.
It is, it is my bad.
I just, I just wanted to recognize the fact that Heather Snow, who's our director of mobility management, after several years of trying, I just wanted to congratulate her, she was nominated by Kathy Hochul, our governor, to be, become a member of the Central New York Regional Transportation Authority, and then was also confirmed by the Senate of New York State. So we have new representative, energized, strong representative on that board, finally. Just congratulations, Heather.
Thank you. And it has been some time to get her appointed, legislator Walpole. Legislator Chesbrough.
Yes, as far as the reports of special committees, I did have a couple things I would like to say to the legislature, as well as the people here. It's about our community survey for the comprehensive plan. It is now officially open, and we need to get as many people to answer the survey as possible. It has to do with all of our transportation, jobs, future growth, arts, culture, and on the, on the table in the back, there's a small thing that you can just scan it, or you can go to the email. It's about a fifteen-minute survey, but we need input from everybody. So I urge everybody in this room, and anybody that you know, neighbors, friends, to please do this survey, so we have a better picture about Oswego County. The second thing was, in April, we declared it Fair Housing Month, and we then had a coloring contest for children, two different groups, four to seven and eight to twelve. And all of this went on in May and April, April and May, and the results are downstairs on the main floor, all of these pictures are up, and I ask everybody, as you please, take a moment just to vote, every vote counts, these kids did take the time to do it, and we would appreciate participation.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, and again, legislator Stan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have some reports I'd like to give.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have some reports I'd like to give. Office of the Aging, they've received fifteen hundred farmer's market booklets. Those booklets will be handed out to the folks that need them, the seniors. Each booklet has a five-dollar coupon value for a total of twenty-five dollars. They can use it at the local farmer's markets or some of the stands around. And that total purchasing value was thirty-seven thousand five hundred. Office of the Aging also will be hosting an event August fourteenth at the Community College in Fulton. This is where they'll be bringing in some insurance companies and also some professionals in the field to answer any questions, health-related, insurance-wise, and it's worth going to for seniors that are looking for new programs. Also this year, this year is off a, or Office of the Aging Senior Picnic. Will be on Wednesday, August twentieth, at Camp Zirby in Williamstown. A picnic meal will be served with a hot dog, pasta, salad, and chips. They're also going to be having some music, live music going on with Bingo. And they're looking for, if you're looking for a ride, mobility management will be assisting with transportation on that event. So they can certainly call the Office of the Aging to get a ride. Office of the Aging will also be hosting the next edition of a six-week stepping-up program. It'll start up in the fall, so registration can be, you can certainly get yourself registered. And it'll be on Wednesdays from one to three. Oswego County Youth Bureau, and this, there's several here too as well, that youth programs for Legends Field is going on. And that runs until August fifteenth. There's going to be baseball, flag football, kickball, softball, and more. This is a drop in the program, or this is a drop in the program with staff on site for hours. So they can drop their kids and go ahead and come back and pick them up. It's free for county residents ages six through fifteen. Harbor Fest will be having a children's parade in addition this time this year. This edition is called Pirates Edition. The parade will depart at West Park at ten-thirty on Friday, July twenty-fifth. Also with the Youth Bureau leadership, Oswego County Youth is now accepting applications for two thousand twenty-five and the two thousand twenty-six class year. This is, you know, they're looking for ninth, tenth grader students that want to, you know, learn how to be leaders and certainly have some fun doing it and some good learning experiences. That's it.
Thank you. And I do apologize to the legislature and to the audience that I got speeding there, got caught. So, so I'll just read through this quickly. Any reports of county officials? Any reports of standing committees? And any reports of special committees? And it ended. We got it. All right, very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you very well. So now, no more miscellaneous business. I will look for the appropriate motion.
Motion.
Motion, chair. Stand your. Thank you. This time, we now enter our public comment period. And again, I would remind everyone, in the interest of fairness for all, that we'd like to limit you to five minutes. It's only to be fair to everyone. This is the time when you can talk about subjects basically of any nature, as long as you're not profane, as long as you're polite, as long as you're civil. You will always have an audience here. Now, having said that, legislator Martino. There are some. Thank you. We do have a pretty good-sized list today. Again, I'd like to remind everyone. Civility, and try to keep it in the under five minutes. We are not the bad people that some in this audience and legislature are trying to point us out to be. I would tell you offhand that since December of last year, I looked this up today, eighty-five percent of our resolutions are passed with bipartisan support. Even today, we're over eighty-eight percent, closer to ninety percent. Many, many things, we're in a grid. We do not have to be, nor should we be labeled as the enemy. But I also do not have Donald Trump's phone number. He wouldn't probably take my call anyways. Just having said that, again, let's do this. Moving forward, Jerry Hogan Casper. He still here?
Give her a minute.
Okay.
Might take me five minutes to get up.
Your time doesn't start until you get on, up here on the clock. Thank you. We may need to have the mic adjusted for you.
Yeah, we've got these guys put up the lever.
Well, she could probably just take the mic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I'm Jerry Hogan Casper. I'm from Fulton. I'm a taxpayer and a citizen servant. And I'm ninety-one years old. Actually, I lied. I'll be ninety-one tomorrow.
Happy birthday!
Thank you. I, I thought I should be here today because I keep hearing things about your meetings, and I wanted to come see for myself. What I'm hearing is some of you owe your eyes from the public speaking. I think that's rude. Apparently, some of you play with your telephone, your cell phone when somebody's speaking. That's rude too. Apparently, usually, a good many of you huddle out here before the public meeting starts. That really makes me feel bad, being with you that. I really wish that I didn't see your backs during the meeting. I'd like to see your face. I really wish that you would use the microphone, so I can hear very well. But I'm sure a lot of people in the back room can't hear what you're saying either. All that makes me think that maybe you're not interested in our concerns. Because we come here before you, and we speak with our hearts. We don't come to fight with you. We come to speak with our hearts because we have these concerns. And we're really hoping that you would take us seriously and listen and work with us, you know, so that we can resolve some of our concerns. You know, we're not supposed to talk about government today. Well, Washington left side. But, you know, it makes me wonder if you do care about the people in our community that are going to lose their Medicaid. I have friends in nursing homes. I'm scared enough. You're going to end up out on the street. I, I wonder, I have relatives that probably are going to lose their health insurance. It makes me scared. It makes me sick. I've never seen anything like this in my whole lifetime, ninety-one years. Makes me wonder if you care about the children in our, I guess you do because there's a lot of discussion about children. But a lot of them are going to go hungry. So I guess what I want to ask you is, do you care? You know, do you care? Have you taken time to talk among yourselves or at meetings about how people can address these problems that we're concerned about? I mean, these are real problems. I know that you've done a lot of good work today. I know that you're good, honest people, or you wouldn't be here. I know that. But I just wish that you would not poof the people in the back of the room who have concerns. Five minutes is not much time, and I guess I've used, probably used it up, but.
There's a little timer right here.
One minute.
Oh, okay. No bells. I, I really wrote about five pages at five ninety-one, but I still can write and use the computer. But, you know, there were so many thoughts that went through my mind, and I cut it down as short as I could to use up your time. I thank you so much for listening. Please continue listening.
Thank you. At this time, I would call Christine Hoyt, forward. Thank you. We have five minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Republicans in Congress passed a big, beautiful bill last week, and the president signed it into law. It will cut SNAP benefits for thousands of people in Oswego County. You probably know someone that benefits from this program. I do, several people. The Supplemental Nutrition Assistant Program, SNAP, is a federally funded program that provides money for groceries. In two thousand twenty-two, over eighteen thousand people received SNAP in Oswego County. This law is going to deliver a big hit to seniors, veterans, and working families. The overwhelming majority of SNAP recipients are families with children who can and do work. But these are often low-paying jobs in sales, waitressing, et cetera. The people working at McDonald's used to be teenagers, but now they're often mothers and fathers trying to earn enough to pay the bills. Children could lose direct access to free school meals that help fuel their health and learning. In Oswego County, there are students for whom Friday lunch is possibly the last full meal that they will eat until school breakfast the following Monday. No one wants to see a child go hungry, but this is what will happen when federal funding is cut for school lunches and breakfasts. In two thousand twenty-five, people on SNAP get, on average, a one hundred eighty-seven dollars a month, which is around six dollars a day. That's not a lot to work with, especially with how food prices have been rising lately. Food costs are expected to go up another three and a half percent this year, which is already hard on families. The new law will make things even tougher. As food prices increase and SNAP benefits are cut, more people will turn to local food banks. The charitable sector is amazing, but in no way can it make up for the cuts in SNAP. People who oppose SNAP claim that those who receive the benefit hold up the finger to help themselves and expect a free handout from the federal government. They toss about terms like welfare queen, leech, bum, but this could be further from the truth. Most people receiving SNAP are working several low-paying jobs and barely getting by. Program deniers fail to understand that most people don't want to depend on federal assistance. Programs like SNAP are also temporary support for people who find themselves in dire straits due to possibly illness, death of the primary worker, or even unexpected unemployment, which lately have been many. Claudia Tenney insists that people receive these services fraudulently. New York State and the federal government investigate fraud and go after the people who commit these crimes against taxpayers. New York State has one of the country's records of recouping money from those investigations. Claudia Tenney voted to cut funding for SNAP for thousands of people in her district. And that money will be used to give tax-cut students already rich. As a matter of fact, Claudia Tenney is a millionaire, so she voted in favor of her own self-serving interests and against us. Our community is only as healthy as its people. Families, childrens, and seniors need access to healthy food. SNAP is not a lifelong entitlement. It's a support program to keep families healthy, and that keeps our community strong. Oops. A couple seconds? I'll wrap it up. Now that the big, beautiful bill has been signed into law, I urge legislation to pass the following resolutions. Pass in public a resolution condemning cuts to SNAP. Educate recipients about what cuts to SNAP benefits will mean and their plans for dealing with hunger in Oswego County. Now is the time to act, and we will be watching. Thank you.
This time, I would call Shannon Levine. Or Levine. What's that? Levine. Thank you. We have five minutes. Yes, sir, for point order, sir. That first beat you may hear, that's the thirty-second warning. Okay.
Go ahead. I'm here to talk to you about the effects of the big, beautiful law on the poor people of Oswego County. Our county is among the highest in poverty rates in New York State. The city of Oswego has almost thirty percent of people living below the poverty level, double the rate for New York State and the national average. As a member of the board directors of the Oswego Human Concern Center, I see firsthand what food insecurity looks like. There are seventeen food pantries in Oswego County, some small with limited hours. Our pantry in two thousand twenty-four distributed one hundred twenty-five thousand meals to our neighbors in need. You need to be protective and finding, proactive in finding ways to counteract the loss of SNAP and USDA funding to help people. Our county residents also count on Medicare for assistance. Approximately twenty-five percent of our neighbors are receiving Medicare benefits. If the cost of these programs falls to the state and local governments, it will be, we will be responsible for over one billion dollars in New York State. Taxpayers' dollars. Our food pantry is less than two hundred feet from this office. I would invite all of you to come and see what we do and how we do it for our neighbors. You should be involved. They elected you. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have Faith Etterer, then, forward?
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I hate to take up so much of your time.
You take a break. I'm going to take a quick break. No problem.
Hello, everyone. I have before me a list. This was published by King State College, and it is based on the writings of Dr. Lawrence Britt in two thousand hundred. Powerful, often exclusionary populist nationalism centered on one redemptive, infallible leader who never admits mistakes. Political power derived from questioning reality, endorsing myth, and rage, and promoting lies. Fixation with perceived national decline, humiliation, or victimhood. White replacement theory used to show that democratic ideals of freedom and equality are a threat. Oppose any initiatives or institutions that are racially, ethnically, or religiously harmonious. Disdain for human rights. Disdain for human rights while seeking purity and cleansing for those they define as part of the nation. Identification of enemies or scapegoats has a unifying cause. Imprison and/or murder opposition and minority group leaders. Supremacy of the military and embrace of paramilitarism in an uneasy but effective collaboration with traditional elites. They arm people and justify and glorify violence as redemptive. Rampant sexism. Traditional gender roles are more rigid. Divorce, abortion, and homosexuality are suppressed. The state is the guardian of the family institution. Obsession with national security, crime, and punishment, and fostering a sense of the nation under attack. Religion and government are intertwined. Corporate power is protected, and labor power is suppressed. Disdain for intellectuals and the arts not aligned with their narrative. Loyalty to the leader is paramount and often more important than competence. This list is characteristics of fascism. I hope that you can see how the points I have listed relate to what is going on on the national stage and how important it is to stand up against fascism. Because of the Big Beautiful Bill, ICE has now a larger budget than any other country's military. You must stop the wave of fascism from hitting Oswego County. You need to pass the No Collusion Resolution and stop working with ICE.
I know we've had a couple legislators that had to go for previous engagement. And does anybody need a break right now? Take a minute, or just keep going? But if you do need a break, just step out and keep rolling. Anyway, Diane Litchison Kuzio?
Wow, you did it. Good job.
I didn't spend that much time in high school.
Last time you splattered it, but this time you got it.
I'm getting better at reading, so. Anyways, five minutes.
Okay. The Trump administration is impacting our food supply and your prices at the supermarket. Cancellation of USDA grants and cancellation of USDA has had profoundly negative impact on farmers. The ICE rates have resulted in thousands and thousands of farm employees not showing up for work for harvest. Your wheat and soy can be harvested by machine, but your fruits and vegetables are hand-harvested or harvested with a combination of humans and equipment. If it rots on the ground, supply goes down and your prices go up. We are already feeling this at the grocery store. I am. I've seen my supermarket receipt go up. Today's farmers have been hit by a new policy. Trump is planning to crack federally funded climate hubs. These are the organizations that track weather patterns that guide and help farmers to make critical decisions about when to plant, when to fertilize, when to irrigate, even what to plant this year when it is a frost coming. Many farmers still won't acknowledge that climate change is man-made, but they do acknowledge that their weather is crazy, and it's making life very, very difficult for them. The data from climate hubs is something most farmers read very closely. Weather is not something a farmer checks weekly or even daily. It's an issue they pay enormous attention to all year round and, in many cases, checking many, many times per day. The tariffs continue to create an unprecedented level of uncertainty as well. Farmers have to weather, no pun intended, the tariffs. And if Trump is correct, the pain is temporary, and he is negotiating a path to expanded markets for agricultural exports. That would be good, but even if that works and agricultural scientists are not convinced at will, you know who will still be standing by the time that happens? Big corporate farms. Right now, the cost of farming is astronomical. Fertilizer prices are sky-high. A lot of farm equipment runs on diesel, and the price of diesel is high. Farmers take out a lot of loans. Farmers must have expensive equipment and have farm repairs and more. And interest rates are really high right now, costing them more money. Plus, the crazy weather right now. Small and mid-sized farmers in around New York 25, 24, and upstate New York are stressed. Many will go under before these trade deals happen, if they happen at all. I urge legislators to talk to local farmers and listen to their concern. I ask them to relay this information to Claudia Tenney and stress the dire situation of our farmers before it's too late. On another note, Mr. Castilla was talking about the Oswego County Airport and how much money it is costing the county. I worked for the county for 38 years. I retired. When I was working at Andrew Michaud Nursing Home, it was sold to a private entity, and that private entity ended up closing. I ended up being able to finish my retirement out at the Health Department, which I was very grateful for. At that time, the places that were on the chopping block were Andrew Michaud, the Oswego County Airport, and Camp House. Michaud was the one that got the chopping block. And I -- the legislators then, Russ Johnson was the head, as my memory recalls. And it's --
It's the 32nd warning.
It's incredible that we have to rely on you to get with the powers that be to help this county. Thank you.
Would Larry O'Brien please come forward?
Before I start my clock, I'd like to address your comment. Now, nobody blames you all for being this, you know, what we see on the news. I'm conservative. Everybody in this room is conservative. But it's a resource management strategy, period. All the rest is spun-up, piled-high horsemen. I mean, it's that you get through editorials on TV. It's regurgitated, you know, through all the media. So nobody blaming you all for being, you know, what I heard today from all your resolutions is, you know, you're doing it conservative, working with the resources you have, bipartisan. That's good. That's a good thing. Keep it going. All right?
Thank you.
What bothers -- now I can start my clock. You're good. You know what? I was reluctant to come up here because, you know, my parents installed a moral compass in me, and they always said if you see an injustice and you remain silent, you don't find your voice, you become part and parcel to that injustice. Okay? Michael Baptist was, you know, found his voice. Maybe it was self-preservation. He said the coming Medicaid cuts are going to be catastrophic. You had hospitals already closing in Texas and Oklahoma pending these cuts coming along. So I thought, you know, I looked at it and, right. I thought about it for a minute, and I said, maybe I could give you a glimpse of what's the impact. And my wife, she passed away two and a half years ago. She worked at a job court in West Virginia. She was, one time, the only counselor for 125 students. Once she passed, I got to see some of her notes and light that kids sent to her. You know, so you figure out how does a homeless teenager in Baltimore end up in fighting forest fires out in Idaho and California? Well, they come through a program. And that program, you know, lucky for them, they got my wife. They kept them engaged and got their GED and the whole bit, and went out. I got a letter, found other letters from a white girl. Most of the ones at the job court were black and brown. A white girl that was homeless. She ended up, you know, it took a lot of time and effort, but she wrote a back, and she thanked God that she come across her because, you know, now she's got her GED. She's actually on a nuclear submarine and even taxpayer. So those are the stories of faceless federal workers. And I just wanted to say that, you know, we have a homeless problem here, and Medicaid supports some of that homeless population when they might have issues and require emergency care. And I also wanted to say that ICE agents, starting today around here, I looked this up. They start out as GS5. The pay is roughly $36,777. And that standard is actually below the 138%. So again, you have a lot of corporations that do this math, and they push them right to Medicaid. You know, we call that corporate welfare. And ICE agents, you know, they're obviously, can be incentivized to earn a lot more just by racially profiling. And I've noted that Broom County, Nassau County, Niagara County, Rensselaer County currently have ICE agreements in place to act as de facto ICE for there. And I just want to point out one of the more stupid things that our Secretary of Agriculture just said. Brooke Rollins, her solution to it all, you know, is to automate as much as we can and force Medicaid recipients to work in the fields. That's her plan. That's what she's actually out and said. And right now, you've got a Kaiser Family study that says 67% of the people that work are working that are Medicaid recipients. And a lot of that is due to corporate welfare because it says everybody is a conservative when it comes to their own pocketbook. All right? So that federal worker, they would have had to pay, and I just looked this up, would pay $464.32 pre-tax, you know, for a healthcare where, if they qualify for the Medicaid, they don't. So that's the reality of it all today. We're talking about people finding their voices, and that's the comment I wanted to make. Baptist found his voice, asking you all to find your voices as humans and not just go with the flow. You know, as a human, stand up as a group, advocate for this county, and find your voice.
Again, anyone needs a break? No legislative client here in this one minute? Don't be late for it. Thank you. Moving on to Barbara Kickbus. Thank you.
Okay, hi, I'm Barbara Kickbus from Alaska. I was here a few years ago and spoke regarding the difficulty of finding legislative schedule, agenda, and minutes. Very glad that those are easy to find now, but I wish that could be the biggest concern of the day. And the Constitution is constructed to promote civil discourse within the government and the public. That discourse was intended to allow all voices to be heard to facilitate stronger legislation that has considered the impact of decisions made on all the people that are represented. I'm grateful for all of you who are here now and those of you who stay after the executive meeting on the 12th to hear the public comments. And I am so glad, Frank, that you said what you said, and I'm so glad that people are all here. Most of you are all here now because that was just unbelievable to me. Medicare is important to many people in the county. People have been talking about it today. A few more statistics. Almost 35% of all Oswego County residents participate in Medicaid. 43% are children. 25% of senior citizens receive those benefits. And what's most interesting is Medicaid is also bipartisan. Roughly 60% of Democrats, Republicans, no parties, and independents all receive Medicaid benefits at some point in their lives. Healthcare is the second-largest industry in Oswego County. Three of the largest employers in the county are Oswego Hospital, Connects Care, and St. Luke's. Oswego Hospital has already made some cuts to staff, and more cuts are likely to follow. People who are employed by nursing homes and hospitals may also lose their jobs. Oswego Hospital operates on just a 2% margin a year, and hospitals are probably going to lose over $31 million in this district. Oswego County could become a healthcare desert. Republicans in Congress passed that great, big, beautiful bill last week. We know that. We know Claudia Tenney voted for the bill. She voted to make receiving Medicaid for 31,000 people in her district more difficult, if not impossible. Based on income tax brackets, the tax changes are going to do less for more people and far more for far fewer people in Oswego County. So does her vote really reflect the needs of her constituents? And did any of you let her know how it could possibly impact her, your shared constituents? I know that people have asked for you. Call, call. Call your representatives, not just people, legislators. Call, call. Let people know how it could possibly affect this county. Okay, so. Have you -- this was a perfect topic for today that you all were talking about because my question was, have you started to prepare? Will you listen to the people that you represent and their needs? Have you considered how it will impact our county's economy, the health of our people, the homeless problem, the crime in our area, and the mental health of our community? That's what Frank and Marie were getting at. They weren't saying you aren't doing your jobs. They weren't saying you weren't helping, but they were saying you have to start thinking about those things now so you're prepared later. What are you going to have to cover? Whether if you do consider those things, I hope it's not too late. I hope people haven't already been seriously harmed, but if someone doesn't start acknowledging that you need to find that information out, how much federal funding is being passed through by the state, then we are going to be caught. I didn't quite get to the end, but better not. I'll come back in a minute.
Thank you. Would Chance Kennedy come forward, please?
Hi, everybody. So yeah, I'm Chance Kennedy. And I had stuff prepared, but I think most of everybody that's already spoken today has kind of said everything that I wanted to say. So what I will say is a couple of things that we'll just kind of touch back on. So I spoke a couple of times in this body regarding childhood property. And I believe it was a 2023 study that a specific county, out of the 62 counties in New York State, a specific county is number two behind Rock County in the most childhood property. And again, that was 2023. And so I imagine that when these cuts take place in 2026 and 2027 and 2028, that we would actually beat the Bronx, be number one, which is not great. So I think, you know, these cuts are detrimental not only to our children, which are obviously our most important population that we should always be mindful of. The other thing is everybody else that is on Medicaid, Medicare, SNAP benefits, everything. These cuts not only affect, you know, a small population or whatever. And maybe some people in this body are insulated and don't know anybody that are on Medicaid or Medicare or SNAP. And that's great for you. And I'm glad that you don't have to struggle. But most of, most people in this county struggle. It's a rural county. People are poor. And it's infuriating when, a couple of meetings ago, it was Frank who had spoke about the Legends Field and how we were going to discount or offer free services for children in this county. And the majority of this body voted that down. And that was, I don't know, infuriating because children in this county should be taken care of. If their family doesn't have money to send their kids to something, a sports event or whatever. And there were people in this body that said that they, you know, if I have kids in, if I have kids at sports, I expect to pay. Great. I'm so glad that you have time, you have money to spend on your kids. Some people don't. And if you not put yourself in other people's shoes, it's, it's just maddening. And so when I, when I hear about, you know, there were people in this body that were like, we don't know, we don't know, we don't know, we don't know about what's going to be federal funded and what's going to be state funded and everything. Great. Maybe you don't know, but you should still be prepared for things that are going to happen in the future. If you have any insight at all about what this quote, big, beautiful bill, which is big betrayal bill to everybody in this country, you know, there would be research that was done to see what has actually come. Like yes, for example, they did no tax on overtime, no tax on tips. But to like the federal minimum standards. So yes, Trump and whoever can say, yeah, we passed no tax on tips and no tax on overtime. But to the minimum standard, $25,000, which is in poverty level. So, you know, these cuts, these, these things that are going to happen to residents in our, in our county, in our state, in our country, are things that we should all need to look at and to advocate for to get some kind of somewhat better cut to what's going to happen to us in 2026 and 2027. You know, I know we can't obviously mitigate everything, but just to be prepared, like the other people have said in this public comment section, be prepared as best as we can to soften the blow for taxpayers because taxpayers are going to be the one that's going to end up taking, taking this money onward. And people are going to be broke, more broke than they were before. And going to be losing all the homes. And it's, you know, just something that we should definitely look into, be prepared and just help our constituents. And that's what you are elected for and that's what we all need to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now with Dr. Cohen. Please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, at some point in time, if we get a stuff or something for the people that might not be in the statue where we have the podium set at, can't see them. Maybe we could get us something for them.
We don't discriminate on white here.
Well, it'd be nice if we had something for her to stand on.
Look at that, but the point is you're holding a ball and they get Dr. Cohen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm not going to talk about this horrific bill because you all know about it. But I'm going to tell you a little story. I'm old, I'm old when I was in high school. A citizen of mercy showed us a movie about Katie Genovese. A woman in New York City, I was raised in New York City. A woman in New York City who was raped and killed in front of all her neighbors. And no one, no one did anything about it. And when the police apprehended the murderer, you know what he said? He said, I knew that nobody was going to stop me. And that story stayed in my mind. I am now 72 years old. And you know what, folks? We are in a moral crisis. You know what? We have forgotten that we are responsible for one another. I am not here to talk about politics. I'm here to talk about that we need to care about one another. That is what makes our country great. You know what ICE is doing? Let me tell you a story. You know, when I was eight years old in communist Cuba, I was woken up in the middle of the night by a soldier, a communist militiaman, pointing a gun at me. In the middle of the night, they trysted my home. I'm 72 years old now, sir. Guess what? I don't forget it. And when I hear about ICE, I am terrified. When I was working and drummed being a psychotherapist to our troops, you know what one of the soldiers said to me? You know what, Dr. Cohen? If we put down somebody bad enough, it gives us permission to tell them. Are we doing that to our neighbors? Are we doing that to people who are so poor that they can't afford living in some shelter? Are we doing that to kids who need our help? Is that the American way? Is that what my father used to talk to me about? Virginia, we're going to go to a country that has freedom. And guess what? I believed it and I still do. My four years of drum showed me that the bravery of our soldiers, our men and women in uniforms, they put on that uniform without asking, am I going to get killed or what? Nothing. They just did it. So today I'm here to beg every single one of you, every single one of you, to stand up for the American way that we are, for what our country has taught us, to be decent to one another, to love one another, to go out and help each other. You know what? As a result of all these budgetary cuts, every time I go to the doctor now, I don't get a nurse. I get some kind of administrative assistant who tries to tell me, Dr. Cohen, what I need. The last time they said, oh, you don't need a Paps man. I said, are you kidding? I had endometrial cancer. Come on, guys. It's time to develop some decency and to stand up. And you as a body can stand up to lawmakers that are indecent. And I am here to beg you. I don't care whether you're Republican or Democrat or independent. I don't care. We are all sacred human beings that deserve to respect and love one another. I don't care. I don't care if you have money or if your sexual orientation is different from mine or whatever. Human beings are sacred. That's what my soldiers taught me. I had kids that died that never came back. That's what they taught me. They taught me that there's something greater than me, that my country is greater than me. Thank you.
Could we now have Mary Phillips come forward?
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
What a powerful comment to have to follow up after. I'm a little retarded now, I have to admit. I could stand before you all today and tell you my lifelong story of traumas that resulted in the challenges I faced today. I could share how H.R. 1 has greatly and significantly affected me, my loved ones and our communities. I could. I choose not to today. Supporters of this presidential administration and of H.R. 1 bill know the consequences. All the Congress has either heard thousands of stories from their constituents begging them to vote no, or has chosen to turn a blind eye or a deaf ear. Either way, they know how millions will suffer. They know people will die prematurely. Our problem as a country is not one of awareness to the plight of others. It's lack of empathy. Unfortunately, empathy can be a hefty endeavor for any one person to teach another. So I will not take on such a lesson today within the five minutes. Instead, I'll tell you something you'll want to remember that cannot be unlearned or ignored. Love always wins. We cannot learn empathy as a skill unless we know love. How do we know love? For me, my quickest teacher was realizing my judgments about others was a call for me to see what I didn't love in myself. Each time I answered the call, my understanding of love in all of its color and complexities expanded and deepened. I learned there was more alike between me and those I judged than there was any difference. Once you experience this for yourself, you begin to understand that empathy is not so much putting yourself in someone else's shoes. Empathy is walking beside them in your own shoes through the shared pains and joys in life. When you see us on the bridge every Saturday defending democracy and all of her people, you'll remember, love always wins. When we fight for our rights in the courts, you'll remember, love always wins. When we come together and defend our community members from being kidnapped off the streets without due process and disappeared into detention centers, you'll remember, love always wins. When we come together to take care of one another, even you will remember, love always wins. I know the road to repair takes longer than that of destruction. I'm not naive. And we have quite a long road ahead of us. I also know the truth, how love sustains us all, even after we've taken our last breaths. Love lives on in the legacies we leave behind. It's written in many of our favorite stories. Love always wins. I hope that thought lives rent-free in your head in the days to come. Because maybe, just maybe, one day, you'll find yourself wondering, what will keep you going when the money's run out? And then you'll remember, love always wins. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey, step in. Ben, smoke? Step in, you got it right. We had a message.
All right. Good afternoon, Oswego County legislators, staff and the people of Oswego County attending. I just, I'm attending as a father and a resident here and just one of you. Hard to follow the last few people, but I'm getting a theme here. I want to ask our legislators, what are you going to, what's your plan to help us? My theme today is our local hospital, as you all know. It's set to have some serious financial stress due to the federal budget that just passed, the CEO of our own hospital. Recently published a letter stating just how devastating those cuts are going to be to our hospital, the quality care, workers in our area. I was able to find some numbers from the 2023 numbers. The U.S. Census Bureau, 23.9% of our county uses Medicaid. 12.8% uses Medicare. That's a combined 36.7%, over a third of the county. So just look around here. I mean, that's 30 or 40 of us, if it was a representative sample, that use those services. And other people said even more throughout their lifetime, 60%, right? So, you know, they were going to stand to lose about $12 million per year in funding. And our congressional district includes our county. How are you planning to help us make up for that shortfall? You know, having been talking with representatives of District 24 who voted yes to cut the money from our country. Taxes usually come back to us, right? We want some representation with our taxes, some foreign services. Government, our taxes pay for things that we want and we need, right? And of course, our local hospital should be funded fully. What are you willing to do at our county level to ensure that everyone in our county is able to have a well-funded and great hospital, right? What's the plan if it's going to shut down? Even upstate and Syracuse is in trouble financially. So would we lose both of those hospitals? How far can we go? Do we have to go to get the care that we all need? Not just emergency care, but preventative tests and treatments. So again, just ask you to put some pressure on our state, on our federal representatives to do the right thing, deliver for the people that they represent for us and support healthcare for everyone in Oswego County. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we now have Chris Weisenberger?
First, I want to thank you all for saying, I wrote this whole public comment on the big, beautiful bill. But after listening today, everybody presented so much information about the detriment that H.R. 1 is going to cause to our county. So instead, I want to address a comment that Chairman Wetherott made. And it was, I don't, didn't get this exact, but it was something along the lines of that we view the county legislature as our enemy. That is not true. We don't view you as the enemy. We're outnumbered in this county, people who believe as all of the people in the back do. We're outnumbered. We know that. Three to one. But we feel, we get, we are getting the message that sometimes you don't really care what we say. On the video in the overflow room, you can see people rolling their eyes. We see people. We see people nudging each other on cell phones, being disrespectful to other legislators. We see this. Last week, only eight of you stayed, and I understand it was late, but it was late for us too. And also, I would point out that it is your responsibility. One of your responsibilities is to listen to the people who come to speak and make their public comment. So we see this, and then we watch the news, and we hear people make comments like Mitch McConnell said in reference to H.R. 1, people will get over it. We'll get over losing our Medicaid and SNAP benefits. We'll get over it. And then we hear Senator Joni Ernst laugh and say, everybody's going to die, so don't worry about Medicaid. And when H.R. 1 was signed, we heard Lindsey Graham say, I feel great. Great, why? Because kids are going to starve and people are going to lose healthcare? Or because he feel great because working class people, like everyone in this room, legislators too, we're all working class people, we are going to be poorer while the millionaires and billionaires are going to be richer. It's a Robin Hood effect in reverse. I think the most horrific, well, it's all horrific, but one of the most horrific things about H.R. 1, the big, beautiful bill, is that the law gives over $170 billion to build more detention centers and hire ICE agents. For those of us of a certain age, we can't help but draw parallels to World War II and Hitler's Gestapo. First, they're coming for the immigrants, but who's next? I think it would come for the people of color, then LGBTQ+ community, Jews, Democrats, women. Where does all this end? We don't view you as the enemy. You are our voice. We need you to speak for us, and you might not agree with our beliefs politically, but you can at least listen respectfully. You can possibly talk to Claudia Tenney and tell her that you've got a large segment of the population that is worried about H.R. 1 and impact on this community. The other thing that you can do is educate the public. So we were talking about where are all these federal funds coming from? What are we going to do when we have to pay for SNAP and Medicaid? People need to know now. It would behoove you to start talking to people now and saying, look, this is going to happen. If we don't know, we don't have a crystal ball, we can't tell where you're going to get your funds from, but at least let people know so they can start preparing mentally. Maybe they can save money, maybe they can make alternative plans for their mother who has to go in a nursing home but won't be able to afford it. So we don't view you as an enemy, but we view you as our representatives, and we ask you to please stand up for the people who are asking for your help and support.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you all for coming. We always will have a place at some point here to hear your voices. And then thank you and see you next month.